Recording in progress.
On the turn of the right, the meeting of the Rialto City Council, room call please. Mayor Barnes, here.
Mayor Protim, here.
Councilmember Orr, here. Councilmember Wilson, here. Councilmember Will, here. Please stand with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the very body for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, that is number two and best is God. That was awesome. Ceremonial matters. Introduction of the Rialto Police Chief Joshua Finney. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor Barnes and members of the council, members of the public. Thank you for being here on this cold but wonderful night. We have a big night for Rialto as we take on a new chief. And I want to just proudly announce that the appointment of Joshua Finney as our new chief of police. Mr. Finney, Chief Finney has more than 16 years of distinguished law enforcement experience and a proven track record of leadership in community-focused policing. Chief Finney is set to lead the department into an exciting new chapter here at Rialto. Chief Finney began his career with the Fortuna Police Department in 2008, where he developed a deep understanding of the region and its unique challenges. Over the years, he's held key leadership roles, including serving as a sergeant in both the Arcata and Fortuna Police Departments. His career highlights include implementing community policing strategies and strengthening public trust, utilizing data-driven techniques to reduce crime and mentoring officers to foster a culture of professionalism and continued learning. In addition to his experience in law enforcement, Chief Finney served in the United States Navy as an E-5 operations specialist. And during his service, he played a pivotal role in Operation Enduring Freedom and earning the Navy Marine Corps Achievement Medal for his exemplary performance. We're excited that Chief Finney is here in Rialto and we're excited for the future of the Rialto Police Department and for this community. So let's go ahead and give him an introductory applause here. Yeah, I think we are going to do a formal. There was the technical swearing-in that occurred a few days ago. But we're going to do a formalized swearing-in here this evening with the mayor and then we'll be at badge pending. And then followed by statements from for the chief.
I
Hi, Josh Finney.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the adopted ordinances, resolutions of the city of Rialto.
And the adopted ordinances and resolutions of the city of Rialto.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservations or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservations or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge
That I will well and faithfully discharge
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Yay. And Barbara?
I'm Brittany.
Brittany?
Brittany.
Brittany, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Welcome to the Rialto family. That's what's happening now.
So part of this ceremony for the chief is the pinning a mentor of the college starters. And so Madam Mayor, I am Chief Day of the Fortuna Police Department, and it's my honor to appear before you and the honorable counsel this evening. It's also been an honor to be asked by Chief Finney to go ahead and complete the caller pinning. So that's what I'm doing now.
Thank you very much. You're welcome to the Rialto family.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, City Council. I would like to thank you and the community for both the opportunity and the trust that you placed in me to become the leader of law enforcement in this community and ensure that you remain safe. I'd like to thank my family for the ongoing support that has led me to this place. Without them, I never would have come so far. And to my mentors, both Chief Day and every other sergeant and executive in my law enforcement career that has career that has guided me and influenced my decision-making and my growing. I look forward to building on my relationship, not only with the council, but with the community and striving every day to make this police department a stronger and better one for the city of Rialto. Thank you.
Thank you. All for coming and participating. I know it means so much to Josh, but it means so much to us as well. I mean, Rialto is so happy to have him. We're proud to have him. We're proud to see that you are all here and your family is here to support him. So thank you very, very much. Hey, everyone. I didn't know.
Thank you. I just wanted to congratulate the council on finding such a qualified person and bringing someone that obviously Fortuna loves down here to serve as the Rialto chief. I wish you luck and you have a great little city here. And I'm always here to support the federal police department. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Barnes, Honorable City Council, Chief Day, for the police department. I just, you know, I want to express how much pride that I have for Chief Finney tonight. He has really been an integral part of our command staff at Fortuna PD and over the last two years has really been a contributing factor to some of our successes in the city. What I can assure the council and the community members here in the city of Rialto is that what has been pounded into Josh is that the buck stops with him, that he, you know, practices extreme ownership and is very good at taking accountability. So I have no doubt that Josh will own his successes and his pitfalls with, you know, equal enthusiasm and do a great job for the city. I think that he will bring a level of sophistication and some new creative ideas for programs for the city. And just once again, I mean, as you can see from the turnout here, he was a valued member of the department and the command staff. Our loss is your gain, definitely. We're going to miss him, but you know, it's only 10 minutes down the road and we're all going to stay in touch hopefully. But, you know, I think I speak for every member of the department and the city when I say, you know, we wish the chief and the community all the success in the world. I think you're going to be very happy with the chief and some of his plans going forward. So very proud of him. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Luckily, we got started. So I think we've got, okay, so we'll bring that to a close. You are now officially in the chair. Thank you. Now we can, I look forward now to should all be able to work together very nicely. Now we will move on to public presentations. This is the time for persons who wish to address the council on any matter not on this agenda and over which the council has jurisdiction. As such, a dialogue with the council or staff is not allowed under the Ralph M. Brown Act. Items requiring council actions not listed on this agenda may be placed on the next regular agenda for consideration if the council directs, unless a binding is made by at least two-thirds of the council that the item came up after the agenda was posted and is of an urgency nature requiring immediate action. Please limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Either of you have any? Any handkerchiefs? Then we will close public presentations and move on to the consent calendar. Is there any item on the consent calendar that council wishes to remove? The full? No, I don't know. Then is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Motion carries five zero. Staff communications page 27 in our package. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor Barnes and members of the council. So beginning on page 30 of your package is also just the police department's update for this period. And it's been a while since we've had one of these updates. I want to just make sure and invite the council to go ahead and review that. Section from the police department, provide any input back via email or just a phone call. We can have any additional information added that the council would like to see. The Eagle River Trail was ready to pave back last week on Thursday. And then unfortunately, the subcontractor in charge of paving got called out on an emergency paved contract. So the paving was not completed prior to the storm. But so we're hoping to get that rescheduled as soon as possible, which would sort of bring the project towards its conclusion. So we'll be certainly monitoring the latest storm activity and whatnot. But the trail relatively came out relatively unscathed from the last storm. So we don't anticipate having any damage, but we'll certainly be evaluating it. With that, I'll go ahead and return it back to the mayor and see if there's any questions from the council and staff maybe I'll answer.
Thank you, city manager. Mayor Protim?
Yeah, is this the police department report, is it for one month?
Yeah, January 2020.
Yeah, okay. I just want to point out under animal control that there were zero cats. And I mean, I mean, there were zero cats. And I, I think, I'm really, really hoping that our municipal state nutrition program is helping with some of the animal control issues. I do see that we have dogs, but there were zero cats and there were huge nuisance. And I hope that we have more multiple zero cats. And that's it. Other than that, thank you all for your time and your work.
Councilor Orr?
No questions.
Councilwoman Wilson?
No. No comment.
Well, I have no comment. I have no questions. Does anyone have any question for the council?
I want to announce a cat's on your backyard. No one's home. There are only nine right now. It might be.
And now is the move to the ordinances and special resolutions. Second reading by Title only and adoption of ordinance number 410-2025, amended section 8.35.040 of the Rialto Municipal Code pertaining to the requirements for commercial edible food generators to include authority for the County of Humboldt Division of Environmental Health to charge fees for the service. City manager, page 34 in our package.
Thank you, Mayor Barnes and members of the council. So this is the second reading and potential adoption of the attached ordinance. We're recommending that the council allow staff to go ahead and reintroduce the ordinance, open and receive public comments. Following that, to close the public comment, direct staff to make any changes to the final draft, next to final draft, or and potentially continue the, into the next regularly scheduled meeting or to adopt the resolution at tonight's meeting. So SB 1383 is California Short-lived Climate Pollution Bill, which aims to reduce methane emissions from landfills in California and rescue approximately 20% of edible foods statewide. So this new mandate requires cities adopt enforceable ordinances for the implementation of SB 1383 requirements locally. So in this particular instance, the law requires edible food generators to be inspected annually by the responsible jurisdiction. So any of these edible food generators in Rialto would be the city of Rialto's responsibility. Staff proposes to engage in an MOU with the County of Humboldt Division of Environmental Health to conduct these inspections on behalf of the city. The county is offering to these services to all the incorporated jurisdictions within the county. And staff anticipates that the other cities will be engaging in a similar MOU. And they are in the process of reviewing that MOU. So 410, ordinance 410 authorizes the County Humboldt to require edible food generators to register and allows the county to assess and collect fees for the program. The division is funded and provides services through fee assessments. So edible food generators have different definitions. In this case, four, and then different requirements. So for square footage and whatnot, your typical Safeway, for example, would absolutely be an edible food generator. However, in Rialto, there are no edible food generators except for one, which would be the Rialto School District. So that would be the only entity qualifying under this course. The inspection would be expected to take a minimal amount of time. But the, you know, the paperwork and correctly doing the inspection is another deal. If the council so chooses, the city's solid waste fund could pick up the cost for the fee. So we would recommend that that be just handled through the MOU when that eventually comes back to the council or comes to the council. So this would set it up in ordinance. And then with our MOU with the county, we would just direct them to go ahead and bill the city for the school district. The cost is not expected to be significant and could be covered by the solid waste fund. However, and that's basically the end of that report. So, so that'll overturn back to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Orr? Councilwoman Wilson?
That's it.
Councilman Orr?
The only thing I have is especially if the city's picking up the tab without any numbers on here, be it minimal or not, I can't say yes on something though. And I know it's going to come eventually. It's not one of those things that we couldn't just say no and get rid of. But until there's a dollar amount, I don't feel comfortable showing yes on it at all.
I was also going to ask about the fee, which I already bothered you about. So yeah, just let me know. I'm curious if, you know, how it'll be calculated. Is it based on population size? Is it just a flat rate for everybody? I do think it would be nice if the city could pick it up, especially if it's small. Anyway, I, I'm going to go ahead and vote yes on this, but I do, yeah, just let me know when you figure.
Tomorrow, I'll know.
Thank you. That's it for me.
And it would be good to know the amount, but I think that overall the county doing it, first of all, knowing what they're doing, you know, what they're looking for versus us having to send someone to training to know what they're doing and understand the whole situation. I think it's more, it's more reasonable to, to go with the county doing it.
Question there.
Yeah.
Who else would pay for it if the city didn't pick it?
The school?
Yeah, so the school districts offers this, the food service to the students. So it would be the school district that would be, that would be charged with. So just as any other, you know, generator would be theoretically charged under the county system.
So would so then the MOU then would have to be between the school and the county versus us in the county? If, or how?
No, so under 1383, any of these edible food generators fall under the enforcement of, in this case, the city. And so we're in the enforcement agency. So the state has said, here's this unfunded program. You can charge fees for it. So it's really not unfunded. And then, and then in this case, we would be turning that over to the county to create efficiency with their Division of Environmental Health. The other cities would be doing the same thing. And so, you know, I would not expect the fee to be significant. Probably the weighted rate of the, of the staff member conducting the study or conducting the inspection. So that would include travel time, writing up the reports, filing the reports. I, you know, I couldn't imagine being more than two or three hours worth of the staff time. So that's the county.
And just that it's circular. If the school district paid for it, wouldn't it actually be the county pinning itself?
Well. The schools, schools are more, yeah, I mean, schools are more of a subdivision of the state. And so it is, and I don't, I don't disagree. I think it is, I think it is curious that this SB 1383 has even included the school districts at all. Because there's a very pretty precise number that you can guess. How many students are there every day minus anybody sick or whatever? So it's just very curious. Again, it's legislation that I think has come under a lot of criticism for its over-prescriptive and overreach in general. And this is just another example. But one of the reasons we, you know, are recommending that we proceed with this is that in the future, Rialto may potentially have a tier-one edible food generator, which would fall under, you know, have required a lot of inspection type activity. And so we're also just trying to be mindful of the future and also follow the state law. So no matter how flawed it is.
Is there any question from members of public? Please go forward and state your name and.
My name's Albert Howe and I'm also an awful ignorant. But are we talking about just a generator producing electricity? An edible food generator? What are we talking about here? I don't know.
So an edible food generator would be like a supermarket or a restaurant that, that produces food. And so there's typically at a site, there may be food waste either through eaten food or.
We're going backwards. State wants everything composted.
Correct. And a lot of these, a lot of, a lot of these institutions, like the Co-op and Safeway have been doing this for years, if not decades on their own. Now there's a state law mandating it and then creating.
I said generators, I kept thinking producing electricity.
Anna Gomez?
Anna Gomez?
So the food generators, is that looking for, they're looking for a specific container? And somebody did come in and take that? Or is that what, where the funding would come from? Just through the school, like is it a specific garbage bin? Or, you know, is it different? What's different from CC Market being selling food out of Rialto, right? That's what I'm wondering. They're, they're a food generator here in town?
So CC Market is, actually does not meet their state threshold as a edible food generator. You would think that they probably would have more food than the school left over at the end of the day. But again, the wisdom of the state law includes the school district as an edible food generator, food generator under tier-two designation. And there's all kinds of different requirements. But generally, in order for a, a market to be considered an edible food generator, would have to be over 10,000 square feet, which they're just shy of, so including the dollar.
That's sad for the school. I just want to, yeah, yeah, with that, thank you. Thank you. Julie, something we heard.
To Rob's point about not having an amount here, how long would it take to find an amount?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Uh, tomorrow. And are we in a rush on this?
No, I mean, the ordinance would, would still need to be passed. There's kind of a two-step thing here. One is we have to change the ordinance to allow this to occur. The second is we have to enter an MOU with the school, or no, excuse me, with the County of Humboldt to conduct our, to conduct our inspections. In that MOU, you could change the language and state where the school district built the city, sent it to care of, you know.
I think she's finding out.
Okay, well, because I was just going to say, I mean, is it a matter of that we couldn't figure? In two weeks, would two weeks make a huge?
There is no rush here. The council can easily continue this item until we have the MOU in, in place or the operable MOU. I'm waiting on the other cities, the bigger cities with more money to look at the MOU first and opine on it before we propose anything to the council so that their issues are worked out. Because the MOU is supposed to be basically the same between the different entities. And so it doesn't make sense for us to spend the money on an attorney when, you know, cities like Eureka have their own staff attorneys looking at it.
Then my opinion would be, you know, Rob's not comfortable and I can understand that we, if in two weeks, we just make that change, get that information. And then, and that's how I just feel.
So is your motion then to table it for two weeks?
I think we should see if Michelle comes back with an answer.
Let's wait for Michelle and see if she's on call.
And I'm not sure that the fee has even been.
It seems like it has. By tomorrow, I'll shoot it. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay to push this two weeks, whatever.
Yeah, okay. So do you want me to make the motion? I mean, I saw a move that we pulled it over in Rialto.
We have a motion and a second. Oh, motion carries five zero. Now we will move to council reports. Mayor Protim?
Okay, oh, I didn't. I was in Sacramento last week for a Cal City Policy Meeting for Transportation, Communication and Public Works. There was no action items except to, yeah, it was mostly informative, but still good to know what's going on in the worlds of transportation, communication and public works. A lot of it doesn't always apply to a city that's small. But if anything ever does, I will absolutely bring it to your attention. We have a Chamber of Commerce meeting this Friday at noon at the town special offices. Lastly, our community resource center is putting on a job fair tomorrow from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. for community members from Rialto or elsewhere who are interested in finding out job opportunities. I hear a lot of people really wishing they had a job. So we are doing a little local job fair down there, 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. tomorrow. That's it. Thank you.
Councilor Orr?
Nothing to report. I haven't been to a meeting since the last meeting. I do want to say welcome to Chief Finney. Look forward to working with you. And even though he chose to make you open record, I'm only going to mention you. That's about it. Welcome.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes, all I have is there is a budget, I want a budget committee for our CEA. And we have a meeting Thursday for preliminary. we have a meeting Thursday, or preliminary midterm, or you can call it, budget on our CEA thing. So, that shouldn't be, that should be more of a routine thing, kind of what we do here. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilor Woodall?
Just been busy here. The nuisance of eating committee, the last one was well-packed, and we had a conversation about the trucking. Then the next day was the traffic committee meeting, and then we had this special meeting, and then we had several other IHO committees concerning hiring the chief. So, we've been busy here. It really has.
Thank you. I, well, we had a special meeting last night, and the, long and short of the special meeting last night was that the trust will no longer park on Big Riggs, will no longer park on Wildwood unless for a couple hours to grab lunch or whatever, no more than two hours, that they will park where they had been parking before, which is basically in front of their residences or nearby, and they have the option to park on Northwestern Highway, which is just north of the bridge, the northbound bridge. And the traffic committee will then develop an ordinance and, or craft an ordinance, rather, and that then will come back to the council, and at that point, we will adopt it or we will make amendments to it. But in the moment, I think everybody is okay and the situation's kind of settled down, I hope. And I hope we worked with the truckers and with the community, and we made it to, we got to a point where we're all good and we're going to work together with them, give them a seat at the traffic committee table, and work together to make this work for everybody. And that's last night's meeting. I went to, I was also in Sacramento, and I was on the, I am on the Environmental Politing Committee, and one of the most interesting things was when they were going over the new legislation for the year and the things that they were crafting to bring up in the new year of this year. I had spoken with the past president of the League California Cities, Cindy Silva. She is a councilperson on Walnut Creek. She's on board of directors of the Cal Cities. I had talked to her about the earthquake situation and the FEMA situation and the unfairness and inequity of this, of that. And she then talked to the executive director of Cal Cities, and they got together, and then they talked to legislators, and they have, they have found a legislator or two that are, they are working now to craft a bill that will allow the state to create a fund that will support rural cities, smaller cities, cities that FEMA, just we, there's no way on earth that we are ever going to reach that threshold, and to create a fund for us. And not only did they do that, we actually were the city that they used as examples of why they need to do this. So, that was good. They put all the numbers out, they talked about what happened, and so that is a very, very positive move, movement. And Cal Cities and legislators are fighting to get a fund here in the state that will help underserved, underfunded cities. So, that was a really big thing.
And thank you, Mayor Garance, for bringing that to the table there. So, you've given a lot of credit for that.
Absolutely. So, and that's, that's all. My HTA meeting has been moved from, normally it's the first Wednesday of the month, and it's been moved to next Wednesday, only for February, and then it'll go back to the first month in March. So, that's pretty much all I have to report on. So, is there a motion to adjourn?
Everything answered.
Oh, stop.
So, the county is seeking MOU with all the cities and a no-fee church.
So, these are what?
Yes, I made a motion, and I, nothing we can do in your firm.
So, the maker of the motion would have to request, and the second would have to agree to amend their reconsidered idea.
Okay. We'll do it tonight. Can we do it right now?
We can do it right.
Let's do it right now.
Yeah.
Well, I move that we approved. Or do I have to move that we?
I, I, I move that we reconsider it. And motion to reconsider the item and a second from the seconder.
Okay.
Which is probably me.
Yes.
Second.
Okay.
And a vote.
And now, will we?
On reconsidering the
Yeah, reconsider. You consider. Motion and a second? Motion carried?
Okay, so now, now
And now, is there a motion to approve and adopt ordinance number 410-2025?
I still move.
Second?
We have a motion and a second? Motion carries five zero. Thank you for the motion to adjourn. And now, is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Michelle.